Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April Media Borough Council Meeting. It's great to see everyone here tonight, and we really appreciate you coming. Before we get started, I just want to take a moment to recognize this time of year. To me, this time of year really means like it's a good time to have a sense of like reflection and renewal and celebration. Anyone who's observing anything this time of year or just like enjoying the season, this is a really great time to be in Media Borough, and it's a great time to be with family. So, thank you so much for taking time to come out. Before we get started, I did also want to acknowledge Governor Shapiro and his family. Our thoughts are with him and his family, given the events that happened last weekend, and you know, our deepest sympathies go out to to him during this difficult time. And I also want to thank our first responders and our law enforcement officials, who have been helpful in their bravery and excellence, you know, protecting their family. And with that, let's make our way through tonight's agenda, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if everyone stands.
(Crosstalk)
Now, we will be approving the minutes from March 1st. We have the March 6, 2025 Workshop Meeting Minutes to approve. I make that in the form of a motion. Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved, and for the March 20th, 2025 Council Meeting Minutes, am I accepting the motion, or am I the one giving the motion? Sorry. There is there a motion? Sorry, it's been a few months since I've done this. Is there a motion for the March 20th Council Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the Council Meeting Minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Now, we go on to public comment and privilege of the floor. This is an opportunity for people to speak to council. Anyone who's interested in writing in comments can go to, can email us at comments@mediaburrow.com. Karen, do we have any letters?
I have none, thank you.
All right. Now, I invite folks in the audience to the mic. If you have something to say, please make sure that you state your name and give your address for the record.
Michael Straw, Media Borough, 499 West Jefferson Street. Normally, I would come before you as a Media Borough resident, and yes, today, that is true, but I am actually coming before you today as a member of the Media Business Authority. So, I come before you as a member of the MBA to discuss an important matter that concerns council. The MBA has been made aware of discussions of adding a ban on black plastic containers to a potential long-discussed Styrofoam ordinance. We are aware that council has been working on a Styrofoam ordinance, and we've been working with our businesses to prepare them for this eventuality. However, a black plastic container ban has come as a surprise to our businesses. We are concerned the timeline is too swift to effectively partner with businesses and perform the proper research. Therefore, we feel these two initiatives should be separated to give the proper time. The plastic bag and single-use straw ordinance was a successful model of how the MBA and the EAC worked to create change. We recommend we have a similar model for Styrofoam and black plastic separately. It's important to note that during the single-use plastic bag and straw ordinance process, a small-focus group-style meeting was formed for collaboration, and to date, a similar meeting has not yet been scheduled. In addition, the current economic instability that our businesses are facing due to tariffs and supply chain issues could have an impact on our businesses' abilities to offer new alternatives in a timely manner for black plastic containers. Therefore, the MBA will formally present its thoughts at an upcoming public council meeting with a thorough outline of our concerns and findings, but we wanted to voice our concerns sooner than later, as we understand the EAC is working to move forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Straw. Anyone else want to come to the microphone and share their thoughts? All right, great. Moving on, we'll move on to the Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Foreman.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of items to discuss. One is related to a grant application. It's called Community Project Funding. It is through direct, it's a direct appropriation through council, excuse me, Representative Mary Kay Scanlon's office. We had applied for that grant last year. They decided not to even do any of those grants. Congress decided not to do any of those grants in fiscal year 2025, but they have reopened it for 2026. So, I wanted to let you know that I'm going to reapply for $500,000. There's no match required, and this would be in support of our Third Street Bridge project, which is a $5.1 million project, in which case we have nearly 90% of the funds already covered through other grants. This would be to cover the last remaining 10%. So, that grant application will be going in later this month. Secondly, I just wanted to acknowledge the damage from the storm that came through on April 4th. It was one of the worst straight-line wind storms that we've had in the borough in over 30 years. We heard from the National Weather Service that there were wind gusts up to 100 miles an hour, 105 miles per hour. And as you may have seen by driving around, there was damage to buildings, damage to cars, damage to sidewalk and property. And so, I certainly, I just want to thank Public Works Department, our contractor, MG Tree. We were, they were on the ground immediately, along with PICO and Verizon and the Delaware County Emergency Management Team, who went out and helped us do a county, an assessment, a damage assessment throughout the borough the very next day. So, there were a lot of partners who were helping to assess what was happening and clean up the aftermath of that storm. Certainly, want to thank our first responders, our fire and our police as well, for their effort during that, during that time. And that concludes my report.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Foreman? Good news about the grant, and I absolutely echo your, your thanks. I mean, what happened on April 4th was really wild, and from what I understand, there were no injuries or anything. I mean, we really lucked out. I mean, it's awful, the damage, but so grateful that, you know, everyone kind of remained safe, so thank you for that. All right. Moving right along to our engineering report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My written report was submitted earlier this month. Couple of updates into the capital projects. You may have noticed, hopefully, that the Plum Street Mall is really starting to come together. The bulk of the pavers, if not all the pavers, are down. The lights have been installed. The light heads are up, the festoon lightings, the overhead lights are in. The fountain is completed. We're really nearing the end of the project. So, after that winter pause, it seemed like we would never emerge, but we are slowly, little by little, getting there. So, again, big thanks to all the businesses who have been affected and have been patient with us during construction, and of course, naturally, to all the impacted residents who likewise have been affected. The project for the Ridge Road Stormwater Management Improvement is very near to being led. The project is still under quality control review by my office. I want to make sure that all of the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, to make sure that we don't have any off-the-bat anomalies with the plan set or any change orders that would otherwise have been missed. Again, the process is being routed through PennDOT's ECMS system, so it's administered in part by PennDOT. So, looking forward to that this year. Philip Green, again, the project was completed. It was affected by the storm, so there's a little bit of cleanup that has to take place. I've alerted the contractor, who's still on the hook for that work to get that done. I'm aware that we have a dedication ceremony date that's planned, so we'll make sure that that work is completed before the dedication ceremony. Our road program is under review by PennDOT to make sure that we are, again, in compliance with all the regulations for PennDOT for our liquid fuels allocation. And then, we did receive back the surveys for the two traffic calming projects that we have in the queue for this year. One at the Holly House, which is the rapid rectangular flashing beacon, the second at Lemon and Jefferson. So, both of those surveys, before we go to final design, are also under quality control, just to make sure there was nothing missed in the field by Mr. Hootman's office. Unless there's any other questions, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any questions for our Borough Engineer?
I just wanted to add, since you brought up the ribbon cutting, just to remind everybody that it's going to be on Wednesday, April 23rd, at 12:00 p.m. So, if you're able to join us, we'll also be there with our funders, both DCNR and Delaware County, some of Delaware County Council through the Greenways Program. So, we're really excited about that project. It looks beautiful. It was done quickly, and everyone in the neighborhood is really happy about it. So, it's definitely a win for the borough, and it was done through grants completely, so it's a win for everybody.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Moving along to our Solicitor's Report.
Good evening, Council. Megan Burns, sitting in for Bob Scott, and I have nothing to report on his behalf.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Burns. Any questions for our Borough Solicitor? All right. Now, we go to the Mayor's Report. Mayor?
Okay, I'm going to do the Arbor Day up here first.
Okay.
Let's see. The Borough of Media proclaims Friday, April 25th, 2025, within the Borough of Media, and urges citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and whiskeys. And further, the Borough of Media urges citizens to plant trees, gladden the tree, and gladden the heart, and promote as well-being of this future generation. That's it. Give it your rest back here. I'm better giving speeches seated down.
No, I like it. You're keeping us on our toes, you know. You're here, you're there, you're everywhere.
Yeah, good. Come here. Okay. We had a pretty busy month. We had, oh, let's see, the total was, well, we had well over 100. I'm going to read some of these, but so, let's see. We had assist to the public 51, assist to other police departments 30, alarms 22, disorderly conduct is five, fires, six fires, harassments four, hazardous conditions 14, and I have a, and the total was 724, most I think we've ever had. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, any questions for our mayor?
Got one question. Of those complaints, how many of those were like traffic complaints and traffic accidents? I'm curious.
I can break it down. Let's see, traffic, it doesn't.
Mr. Mayor, if the-
Parking, parking was 27.
Okay. I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, if the report doesn't state it, I can always follow up with the police chief and give that information to Councilperson Washington.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me in.
Any other questions for our mayor? All right. Moving along to Council and Committee Reports.
I'll start with my liaison announcement from the Traffic Calming Education Plan. This month's topic is "Just Slow Down." Our speed limit in Media Borough is 25 miles per hour. In our school zones, it drops to 15 during the day to protect our schoolchildren during drop-off and pickup times. Slowing down leads to safer streets. Slowing down leads to fewer accidents. Leading transportation authorities such as the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, the World Health Organization, and our friends who promote Vision Zero initiatives agree that slower speeds lead to safer streets. As speeds increase, braking distances increase, and reaction times are cut significantly. Just slow down. Managing speeds is the number-one priority to advance Vision Zero. The next time you're out and about, ask yourself, "Why am I in such a rush? And why are you in such a rush?" Instead, just slow down. Moving on. Next up, I have the authorization to advertise the 2025 road program, so I will make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
A second has been made. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing to advertise the 2025 road program, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And moving on, I have the, to authorize the solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance permitting 10-minute free parking in the State Street District. And I make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second? The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Trey, do you want to give any color to that?
Yes. So, a few months, a few months ago, a few months ago, we received some public comment on behalf of businesses in the State Street District regarding some hardships relating to parking on behalf of their businesses and their customers, again, relating to parking on State Street. And so, they had made a couple of requests, which we've then gone forth in committee and discussed, and of the, of their requests, we've balanced what financial implications we could to offer up this 10-minute free parking as in a way to kind of bridge that gap.
Great. Any additional discussion on the motion?
I would just like to add one piece of logistical information for the public, which is that this is through the Passport app only. So, if you were to go on State Street, and you typically use the kiosks, you will still have to put your money in for the kiosk, but if you use the app through Passport on your phone, you will be able to get the 10-minute free if this gets passed by council.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Any additional discussion? All right. All those in favor of authorizing our solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance permitting 10-minute free parking in the State Street District, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Herman? All right. Moving right along, Councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I have no liaison announcements. First item on my list is the Resolution Number 2025-24, and that is the revised fee structure and resident prioritization for room rentals. And a little background on that is Karen Rapinoe, our administrative manager, kind of ran into some difficulties from residents trying to book the, you know, the community center, and, and they all got disappointed into finding out that it's like booked for like six months and, and maybe longer. So, this revised fee structure will give prioritization to the residents. And thank you again, Ms. Rapinoe, for going through the logistics of everything. So, yeah, once again, I'll put it in. Resolution Number 2025-24 for the revised fee structure and resident prioritization for room rentals, and I offer this up in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of Resolution 2025-24, the revised fee structure and resident prioritization for room rentals, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Next and final item for me is the Resolution Number 2025-25, sale of a 2016 Ford Explorer to Bethany Peterson for $3,800. And this is an old police car, and this is just more of a housekeeping item, and I believe the, that the $3,800 goes to the operation fee, I mean, operation fund.
Operating fund, yes.
Operating fund. All right. Once again, I'll put this up. And Resolution Number 2025-25, sale of a 2016 Ford Explorer to Bethany Peterson for $3,800, and I set this up in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor of Resolution 2025-25, the sale of the 2016 Ford Explorer to Bethany Peterson for $3,800, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Right. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Washington? All right. Moving right along, Joy will be the pro tem for my report. Liaison announcement. So, I wanted to, last, when we met in workshop, I let you all know that there was going to be this really great event for Main Street professionals in media two weeks ago, and I'm really happy to report that it was an amazing success. So, just to remind you, we had over 30 Main Street professionals visit media, and they came from all over the country. They're from like 19 states, and they came for a walking tour of State Street, where they actually met at, we all met with them at the Media Theater, and then we had tour guides. It's kind of like admissions day for college, where we took them around, we took them down State Street, we talked about Palm Street, we talked about, you know, how we're able to minimize open, open real estate on State Street, and we got so many compliments on this tour. Dave Fairman and Vanessa and Heather got stopped multiple times at that. So, it was actually, the tour was on Sunday, and it was the beginning of a three-day conference in Philadelphia for Main Street professionals, and Dave and Heather and Vanessa got stopped multiple times at the conference, saying what a great tour it was, how well-run it was, how like, how excited they were about media. On Wednesday, there were three attendees that went into Earth and State, and they actually skipped the last day of the conference to come to media instead, because they had heard so many good things about media from other attendees. On Thursday, an attendee that had been on the tour on Sunday brought, so she was driving back to Georgia, which, wow, that's a wild drive. She had a car full of people, and they stopped in media on the way to Georgia to bring other people to media who hadn't been on the tour, and for her to be able to spend more time in media. So, just really cool. I mean, I think we know that media is a bit of a gem in this region, but it's really cool to hear how other people can see the magic that we have here in Media Borough and in our State Street District. So, you know, I really want to congratulate the MBA on putting together a really great tour, but I also want to thank our Borough officials that were involved. Brittany was there, I was there, Mark Paykov was there. We had a bunch of community members and volunteers. The MBA Board helped pull it off. Also, want to thank Steve Byrne from Visit Delco and Christian from the Media Theater for opening the day up, but it was a really cool time. And if you get a chance to talk to Dave Fairman, please ask him about it. He's had a ton of emails and phone calls since the, since the time people just want to pick his brain and really have him share some of the secret sauce that we have here in media. Also, want to talk about two events really quickly. The Media Spring Art Show is Sunday, April 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The rain date would be the following Sunday. And Dining of the Stars. It's so weird to think that Dining of the Stars was about to happen, but Dining of the Stars is about to happen. So, the first Wednesday of the month is May 7th. I believe that's also going to be the day of the kickoff to Delco Gives. So, make sure to put a couple of those items on your calendar. So, now, moving on to my agenda, I do want to talk about the payment of bills, ratifying the bills in March. For the general fund, $240,884.95. Nothing for the liquid fuels fund. For the rec fund, $4,671.19. For the capital fund, $41,472.62. For a total of $287,028.76, I make the ratification of the bills in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor for the payment of bills for the month of March totaling the total of $287,028.76, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Motion carries unanimously. And I'm a yes, too. Sorry.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? Great. Moving on, Ms. Malkoun, are you going to be covering for?
I am.
Awesome. Great. So, I'll turn that over to you. Okay.
Fabulous. Liaison announcements. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Comprehensive Plan that will be, that has begun the process in Media Borough. And as a reminder, our Comprehensive Plan is a roadmap for the borough's next decade and beyond. It serves as a foundation for policy and investment decisions and lays out goals and strategies for a variety of topics that include land use, housing, open space, economic development, infrastructure, transportation, and more. So, I'm saying this because the website for our Comprehensive Plan is now live, and I encourage community members to go to the website to sign up for project updates, enter your email address to receive updates and news. That is armedia2035.com. And I don't know, Kevin, if you're going to talk about the Easter egg hunt that's happening this weekend, but there will be a pop-up from our consultants who are working on the Comprehensive Plan at the Egg Hunt this weekend. Did I capture that? Awesome. I just wanted to make sure. So, yeah, just a reminder for folks, because community participation in this plan is really important. I don't think I have any other announcements. Moving on to the meat of the agenda for community development and planning, the zoning hearing board application for 100 West Front Street. Do I give background on it now, or do I? Okay. Thanks. This is my first time doing these things.
You're doing amazing.
So, 100 West Front Street, this came before the Planning Commission, and both of the things that are before you tonight, we talked about in workshop, 100 West Front Street, there wasn't any, there wasn't any reason the Planning Commission didn't see why this couldn't move forward to zoning hearing. So, the applicant is requesting relief on parking, converting a business to residential. Brittany, am I missing anything on that one?
Nope. That is essentially, essentially it.
So, do I make that in the form of a motion?
Well, actually, the, the motion is, the, well, the recommendation for the Planning Commission was to not send the solicitor in opposition of this, so you do not need to, unless there's somebody on council who is concerned about it and wants to send the solicitor, there does not need to be a motion.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Okay. Then that's it?
Yeah.
So, I make it in the form of a motion, the zoning hearing board application for 100 West Front Street.
A motion has been made. Is there? Nope, there, we don't need a motion.
No motion.
We don't need a motion if you want to take no action, so.
Okay. No action. Yeah.
So, we don't, we don't mean to vote on taking no action. We just take no action.
If you wanted, for these, if you wanted to send me or Bob to the meeting, either in support or against it, you would have to make a motion and a resolution to do that, and then, we've also, for other municipal clients, we will, like, if you want to do a motion or a resolution to send a letter in support or against, we could also do that, too, for these sorts of matters before the zoning hearing board. You can, you can assert party status, but if we're not going to do anything, no resolution or motion needed.
Okay. Thank you. Similarly, for zoning hearing board application for 8 East Second Street and 115 North Jackson Street, taking no action on this one. This, Brittany, I will need help on this one, because this one was a little bit more-
Complicated, yes. So, again, it's similarly that it is a, a conversion to residential. It was office. It is going to residential, and basically, there's a number of things in it. It's a lot-in-line adjustment between the two different properties. There's about 19 non-conformities. Four of them are going to be reduced, five are going to be continued, five are going to be eliminated, and it's, dealing with various variances related a lot with impervious coverage. But overall, they're trying to build, it's going to be five different apartments, three two-bedrooms, two one-bedroom spaces, and the Planning Commission did not recommend any opposition to it.
Great. Okay. So, taking no action on this one.
You can feel free to discuss it if you want, but if everyone's of the mind to not take action, we can just move on.
I agree with the-
Planning Commission. Great. Wonderful. Okay. Okay. Coming to our next, our next agenda item. Coming to our next agenda item, this is authorizing the solicitor to draft and advertise an amendment to the Mobile Food Vending Services Ordinance. This has been an ongoing conversation in CDs, in the Community Development Committee, as well as in our workshop sessions. So, before us tonight, we can consider, we have a couple of options to consider in terms of how we would like to authorize the solicitor to draft and advertise an amendment to the Mobile Food Vending Services Ordinance. Do I go through those options right now? Okay.
Think it'll be helpful.
Yes. Okay. So, one option would be for, one option would be for us to move forward with an ordinance that has two spots in the front of the courthouse, separated by about 20 feet. I believe everyone got a picture circulated around it in terms of what that could potentially look like in front of the courthouse. look like in front of the courthouse. Option two would be to permit two vendors for two days a week only, with no overlap, for example, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, for each vendor. Another option would be to choose one of those two, moving forward, for a year, and then put in place restrictions for size of vending carts and remove the site from the front of the courthouse to the sides, as we had spoken about before in a couple of our meetings. Again, as a reminder, this came forward to our attention because there had been some instances where the police had to be called to intervene in disputes that were occurring in the front of the courthouse between the vendors. And it came to our attention that, oh, in fact, the borough does have the right-of-way on the sidewalk. So no individual owns the sidewalk, the borough has the right-of-way to the sidewalk in front and around the courthouse, which means that it's within our jurisdiction to regulate that area. So I'm putting forward these three options and open for discussion, I guess? Is that how it goes? I don't know.
So do you want to put up a court motion and then have a second and review discussion? Or how do you look at that?
But like, don't we have to decide what we're motioning on? Like, I feel like we need to decide on the option and then that's what the motion is.
Right, so we can go through the options, options one and two, and then the third one would be the delay for a year, or not the delay, the third option would be either option one or two for a year. And then we would be inputting size restrictions and putting regulations on where the, we would be placing the carts on the side. So I think the best way to do this, there's technically four options. If, there's technically four options, or five. One is not do anything at all. Second is you can table it if you want more time to decide between the options. And then we could, we would have to do a motion for each one of the, substantively, those three options. Does that make sense? Brittany, do you have any suggestions? Because there's a lot of options.
So wait, when do we get to discuss it? We have to put it in form of a motion first and then we discuss each one individually?
I think you can discuss open, but then before you move, you can move on option one, you should second it, discussion, and do it sequentially like that, if that makes sense.
So discuss the options now so that you guys understand.
Okay. Discuss what? I'm sorry.
The options.
Yeah.
Well, if I may, I do like the idea of delaying this decision, the, I'll stop, I'll back up, I'm sorry. I have watched a lot of drama unfold in front of the courthouse over the last couple of months, and I personally would like to see the front of the court without drama and without food carts. And for that reason, I would like to move the mobile carts to the side with restrictions so that we are not impeding upon the sidewalk or ADA regulations and so forth. When I walk the borough currently with the trucks in front, I'm amazed at how much forward they are with the lines, you have to really scoot around. And frankly, I'm, I'm feeling like the front of the courthouse should be free of these kinds of distractions. I do not want to give anyone who's working there, like, a day to figure things out. And for that reason, I would like to be able to say, you have a year to figure if you would like to resize your truck, if your truck is not fitting in that spot, or if you want to find a different place to sell. So for this reason, I would very much like to see the courthouse clear, but I am okay with whatever it is the council wants to do for a year. I do not have a big preference on option one versus option two, although I do think option two would have less drama. So for that reason, I would prefer one or two, but then delay this and then in a year have the courthouse free. Additionally, it was brought up at our workshop that if this is indeed our space that we did not realize before, there are possibly other things we want to do with our right-of-way. And I just, I feel like there's better ways to utilize that space than having mobile vending. That's my thoughts.
So I mean, I'll jump in. I like that. I mean, I definitely have a preference between options one and two, but I still like the idea of whatever we decide, to delay it off by a little bit of time, to have time for it to adjust and see if we want to continue to allow mobile vending or if we want to do something else. Personally, I don't like option two, just the notion of having to pick. Like, currently, people have a choice. I don't want to take the choice away. That's just me. But that's me for now.
Joy, you?
I've been thinking about it for a little while, and I've been going toward option one, just to separate by 20 feet. Because I just feel uncomfortable, you know, kind of intervening with like who can operate on which day and the other. But no, Lisa, you're right, that it's our right-of-way and, you know, we should get to decide how it is used. My concern, like, when I do walk around the area, is that there's like grease stains on the ground. So if, you know, if the council does go with option one, for example, then I think we're also going to follow up with like making sure that the grounds are left as they were before, you know, cleaned up, you know, leave it how you found it. So I think I would just go with option one, with making sure that the area is cleaned up after, after the vendors are done for the day.
Kevin, do you want to comment?
I think I'm with Joy in favor of option one. That seems to be the simplest one, just to simply separate them. But I also like the idea of giving it a year and then seeing how it works. And then after that, maybe do something different if it doesn't seem to work. But I think separating them and having them in the front still gives them the ability to be more visible, and it does add a little bit of openness. So I'm more in favor of that option at this point.
Right. I guess I'll go. I'm in favor of option one. My concern about moving the permitted businesses to the corners, and to be fair, like, this, I kind of prefer to think about it a little bit, but my instinct sort of says, one is we do have businesses on the one corner, like right there with rivalry and departure. I would hate to pull away from their business. So that would be a concern, simply from like a business perspective. Also, the corner of Orange and Front Street is very busy with car traffic, and I'm a little concerned that when you have like lines forming, that there might be some pedestrian issues with like lines sort of like accidentally like going out into the street. And, you know, that stop sign is optional sometimes. I'm a little nervous from a safety perspective. Maybe I'd want to think about that a little bit, but I would, that was sort of a gut instinct that I had there. So for me, it's the first option, two spots, keep them in the front of the courthouse.
It's my turn.
I don't know where you go with it from there.
Yeah, I, my preference would be to remove vending from the front of the courthouse. I don't, I don't see a need for it in that space. I think that operationally, it happened, it occurred before on the sides. I think it can resume to the sides. I think that we have now a framework for permitting that I think will ensure some things around safety, ensure some things around cleanliness, hours of operation, enforcement, and fines. So I'm really happy with the bones of the, of what are, what is being considered in terms of the ordinance for mobile vending. Yeah, and I personally, my preference would personally be to have the vendors continue operating. Again, I would agree with Lisa, I don't really have a preference in terms of whether they are both in the front together or whether they alternate days. But I would, I would, my preference would be after a year of that to move to creating a regulation for the size of the carts that we allow, which would then ultimately impact what could be sold at those carts, which may have, to your point, Liz, less of an impact on our, on our restaurant district, I'm not sure. And also the location. So that's where I stand.
Great, so.
It seems like we're split a couple of different ways here.
I've heard, one, two, three, at least four of you say the option one, two of which have said option one is fine in the short term, but they're asking about a longer-term thing, which is restricting the cart size and moving to the sides after one year. I was wondering if the other, if you guys could comment on the restriction, if, where you guys feel about that, that longer-term piece. And if there isn't consensus now, that's fine. But if there is, since we get, if you could speak about that, then we could figure out if there is consensus.
I guess I'm first. I mean, I'm all for delaying it just so we have more time to figure it out. We don't have to make the long-term decision tonight. But I would generally be in favor of putting actual regulations in place around what we do allow and where we want to allow it at. You know, currently, it's, you know, there's not, there's not much, it's just here. So I will take that gladly, you know, the option one for a year and then something else down the road.
But you want to be able to talk about what that something else is versus saying, this is the restriction of the cart size and asking the solicitor to write that in now?
Yes, that's, I'm very much, let's not do that right now, let's delay that.
Okay.
Can you go?
Yeah, I think it should be option one. I really, and to be fair, like, option three is sort of like, like, option one and two, we discussed option three is a little bit different, but I don't, at this point, feel comfortable about it eventually going to the two corners. I have a safety concerns and, you know, we might be creating competition for existing businesses, more permanent businesses, both of which on that corner are open for breakfast, or one's open for breakfast, the other one's open for breakfast and lunch, or just for lunch, excuse me. So there would be direct competition there, and I do want to flag concerns there, or would need more information about how the pedestrian safety would be affected with the four-way traffic on that corner.
Yeah, I share those concerns too, with putting them on the corners, because, like you said, like the pedestrian and driver safety and the visibility aspect of putting them on the corners might be a little tight, because those corners are just, yeah, like, yeah, so. So about delaying it, I'm not really clear on like what we're delaying, we're just like delaying the decision of like.
I don't think we're actually delaying it, no. The option is, the option is to give both vendors adequate time to determine whether or not they want to remain working in the borough based on the restrictions that we're going to put in, the restrictions that are proposed, or whether or not they will take their business someplace else.
And both of these businesses have worked on those corners for years, I think.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, so it has been done in a way that I think worked for safety and so forth.
I'm sorry. Lisa, can you repeat that again? I thought those two businesses work in front of the courthouse, not on the corners.
So my understanding is for several years, they were on the sides. They've already operated there during the pandemic, I believe. They were not allowed to be in front of the courthouse, did we?
I don't know the exact year, but I do know that one of the businesses who's here has mentioned in the past that she had been on the side.
Yeah.
And.
For not a short period of time.
Yeah.
Like, at least a year. I think they were on opposite sides, and that continued for a while.
Yeah, I mean, there still was less traffic if that was like a pandemic thing, I don't know.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And there weren't two businesses, I mean, if that's true, there also weren't two businesses there during the pandemic.
Understood.
Well, there would have been the one on the one side.
Um, I guess on the roll, on a roll, that would have been.
Okay, so from enough of the less, Kevin, Councilman Boyer, you want to speak, but you do not have four, at least four votes who are saying that they're interested in and we, and putting in a size restriction in a year.
Mm-hmm.
That's what's happening right now.
Oh, right, yeah, that's where I kind of.
And moving to.
Or do you want to table it for more discussion than like that third option one? Like, that's also an option.
And if you want to table it, we should vote on tabling it first before voting on any of the options. It looks like, based off of what Brittany said, right now, it would be, we would maybe have the votes for option one with no delay, we're just doing the 20 feet between the two vendors, and we would put some of the regulations in place about like getting the permit and the bullet list that we had discussed in CDC. So it seems like it would be between those options. So I think maybe a vote to table first and then a vote for option one, no delay. Does anyone want to make those motions? Or Brittany?
I just had a question about the tabling. Could they not just do a motion, and I defer to you as a solicitor, but could they not just do a motion to authorize the solicitor to advertise, to draft and advertise around separating them 20 feet and in their spaces, along with the safety and the ADA and all the cleanliness regulations that we've talked about in the past? Do they have to table anything, or could they just not do it?
If they don't want to move to table and just want to vote on option one, that's totally fine, they can do that first.
My sense that what I'm getting right now is I don't think there is any appetite for regulating size and moving the vent, mobile vending to the sides of the courthouse. That's what I'm sensing right now.
Well, I would.
I think you and me are the only ones.
I might be getting there, but I need more time to sit with it.
Yeah, I think that's why I'm kind of offering up the table option.
Okay, so then I'm.
And maybe we just put it on the agenda for workshop to kind of discuss through, and it gives us a little bit.
Yeah, I think this is too important to just be rushed.
Yeah.
You know, this is the kind of thing that we should discuss in workshop, that's why we have workshop. And it seems like we have some more work to do to make sure that we're all on board with the same thing. So I think tabling is a good point at this.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Okay, so I put forth a motion to table. Where's my thing? To table authorizing the solicitor to draft and advertise an amendment to the Mobile Food Vending Services Ordinance.
Second.
Oh, well.
What?
Discussion.
Oh, any, well.
We already discussed, but.
No, no, I don't, I thought you were telling me something else. Yes. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor of tabling the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The motion to table has passed unanimously.
That has concluded my portion of tonight's CDC.
No, but we get to circle back, so don't get too comfortable. Any questions for Ms. Malkoon on the CDC and planning pieces?
All right, moving right along. Councilperson Boyer.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. I have a few announcements. First of all, I'd like to echo what Brittany said earlier about how fortunate we were to not have been, let's say, more injured by the storm event. I was more or less at ground zero to the point where I looked out my window, there's an Action News crew in my street, and I'm still looking at the tree that was a perfectly healthy 40-foot pine tree, which is now a 20-foot pine tree with a trunk about yay big laying in the middle of the street for a while. It was just amazing, the destruction, and I like to praise and give all the compliments to all our first responders, I shall Chee Tsukurelli. Not too long after that, unfortunately, like you said, there was nobody hurt, but they were very busy, and we were fortunate that it wasn't worse, but it was still pretty bad. It was just amazing to see all the destruction, but we're very fortunate to have the crew that we had cleaning everything up within a few days. It could have been much worse, so we're very lucky for that.
Can I also add that it was nice, the county was also here taking a good look at it. So it wasn't, it was borough and county, everybody was on the scene, and I appreciated all of their efforts.
I got to see drone pictures of.
Yes. Drones, right there.
Talked to the same guy. So yeah, it was just amazing that, and you could almost draw a straight line, and it was literally straight-line winds that came through and just, it had to have been at least 100, maybe more, because I keep looking at the tree and there was absolutely nothing wrong with it, it snapped in half, so, thanks. Anyway, so on a better note, a couple of liaison announcements for REC. This Saturday is our annual Easter egg hunt. It will begin at 10:00 a.m. and it usually concludes about five minutes after that, when all the eggs are taken, but there'll be lots of things going on. I think EAC is going to have a table, and they last year handed out little seed bombs, and I think they're going to do something like that, so. It's a little bit different this year, we're pretty much going to be on the area outside of the community center, and that's okay, because it's an outdoor event, but there is a. okay because it's an outdoor event, but there was an event happening inside, so we'll be confined in the area around the porch as opposed to inside. But otherwise, it'll go off as usual, so I'm looking forward to all the happy kids and all the other happy people being there this weekend. And another reminder that REC does have a list of monthly events, so go to the Borough website. You can see our little card that's out there and all the things that are happening weekly throughout the month. And REC has always, has done a great job in putting those things forward. As far as any type of legislative business, I have four mass gathering permits. So number two, mass gathering permit for the Media Fellowship House, Street Dance Party and Community Garden Kickoff. This will be on Sunday, May the 4th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m., and this is on Franklin Street, roughly in front of where the Fellowship House is. There were no issues by the Public Safety Committee, so I make that in the form of motion that we approve the mass gathering permit for the Media Fellowship House. Street Dance Party and Community Garden Kickoff on Sunday, the May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor of the mass gathering permit application for the Media Fellowship House Street Dance Party and Community Garden Kickoff to be held on Sunday, May 4th, 2025, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and number three is a mass gathering permit application for the Nativity BVM Parish Block Party. This will be on Saturday, May the 10th, from noon to 5:30 on Franklin Street, from the road to church, and church street between Franklin and the garage, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the mass gathering permit application for the Nativity BVM Parish Block Party to be held on Saturday, May 10th, 2025, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Number four is the annual Media Elementary End of the Year Block Party. This will be on Friday, May the 30th, from 3:00 till 9:30 p.m., and this involves closing Edgemont between State and Fronts where they have the gates like they usually do during school. So I make it in the form of motion that we approve the mass gathering permit for the Media Elementary End of the Year Block Party on Friday, May 30th, from 3:00 p.m. till 9:30 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the mass gathering permit application for Media Elementary's End of Year Block Party on Friday, May 30th, 2025, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And then finally, this is a new event, Three Potato Four, which is the really cool store on State Street, is going to have a summer festival. This will be on Sunday, June the 22nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Front Street Park. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the mass gathering permit application for Three Potato Four's Summer Festival to be held on Sunday, June 22nd, 25, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Councilperson Boyer? All right, moving along to Councilperson Gilman.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vice President. I have a couple liaison announcements. They are the same announcements made at workshop, but I want everybody to know that April 27th is the EAC Eco Tours, and you can check that out online. It is free. You get a 20-minute walk around the borough and get to find out a lot of useful information about our environment and community. Also, that same weekend, April 26th to 28th, is our annual book sale at the library. On Saturday and Sunday, it will be 9:30 to 4:30. On Monday, it is 9:30 to 6:00. I have one legislative item, and that is, has been discussed at workshop. It is a bit of housekeeping at this point. If there's no discussion needed, I will just bring that up. Does anybody need any more clarification on this item? Okay, so I would like to authorize the solicitor to advertise an amendment to the Non-Uniform Pension Plan Ordinance. I offer that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of authorizing our solicitor to advertise an amendment to the Non-Uniform Pension Plan Ordinance, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Councilperson Gilman? All right, moving right along. Back to Councilperson Malkun.
Oh, fabulous. Liaison announcements for Shade Tree or zoning hearing board, nothing for zoning hearing board at the moment, but check back with me next month. I'm sure I will have something. Shade Tree, yeah, Shade Tree will be at the Eco Tour, thank you. Shade Tree will be at the Eco Tour, they will have a table, so be sure to stop by and get any information about trees in the borough. I only have one legislative item, and that is Resolution Number 2025-26, Appointment of Michael Dunn as Tree Warden Arborist and Approval of His Proposal. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It sounds like this guy comes highly recommended, and it sounds like it's a real win for the borough if we vote on this moving forward, so I just wanted to call that out. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2025-26, the Appointment of Michael Dunn as Tree Warden Arborist and Approval of the Proposal, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Malkun?
I just have one. Is EAC having a table on Saturday?
The EAC?
EAC, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
So I saw a mention of...
Oh, oh. I don't know, actually, Lisa would be the person to ask about that.
Oh, for REC, you're talking about for the...
For the rec, for the...
Yes, they are having plots of sorts, yes, they are definitely doing something.
I saw them mentioning flowers, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not sure it's technically with the EAC, but it is with...
Well, that Julie Smith, I think is going to be...
Yeah, so it might be through TTGM.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there, that might not officially be...
But anyway, there's going to be a table there with plants.
There will be something, yes. Yes, there is.
Not just candy and eggs.
However, I would like to say on behalf of the EAC and the REC, if people can recycle any of their plastic eggs or reuse any of their plastic eggs, that would be a nice environmental action piece.
Great call out.
There are 5,000 eggs or something like that. It's insane. It's like an insane amount of eggs.
Any additional questions for Councilperson Malkun? All right, now I want to toss it over to our junior councilperson, Ms. Petrucci. Any comments?
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
All right, any questions for our junior councilperson? All right, moving right along to our second public comment of the night. Karen, have you received any emails? Great, I invite anyone in the room to come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, folks. My name is Jesse Unger. I live at 500 North Jackson Street. A couple of quick comments. I want to thank Borough Council for your quick and effective action, listening to media business community finding a way to implement free parking through the app. I think it's an extraordinary response, time to a really clear and concise problem. Thank you all for working through that. Second thing, I don't think I heard it mentioned tonight, but I also wanted to thank you all for the Third Street Bridge Community Meeting. I think that's happened since the last legislative session. That was excellent. It was really great to hear from the partners that we have involved in making that happen. I'm really excited for the work we have ahead of us. And then finally, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to find a quick and simple solution to an ongoing serious problem. I know that they're out front of the courthouse. I understand that there are some complications and concerns about the eventual long-term solution that finds a sustainable way for us to have these micro businesses in our community. I strongly encourage you to not let this go yet more months. I think that we can find a short-term solution that addresses the immediate issue, and that we can put some longer-term thought into it after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Unger. Anyone else? Public comment?
No, go ahead.
I'm not a resident, so am I allowed to make a statement?
Yes, just state your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Livia Smith. I live at 930 East 18th Street in Chester, the oldest city in the state of Pennsylvania and in Delaware County. I know y'all know that by history. I just want to say, every month, our sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Chester Luny Chapter, we rent the room across the way, and we thank you for one of our members who lives in media, you may know her, Cheryl Nichols, who is former Judge Nichols' wife. So I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, allowing us to rent the room. And I also wanted to let you know that as our sorority, we come to all the different council meetings within Delaware County, offering our support if anybody has any events or any things that they would like us to collaborate with, we're at your beck and call. Just to let you know, we give out $25,000 a year in scholarships to high-skilled students within Delaware County. So we have memberships, 165 members, and we're all through Delaware County. So we're here tonight, I'm here with Delora Shelton, also, who is a member of the sorority. So we just say thank you, and if you need us, you know how to find us because we're on contract with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to thank all the council people.
Sorry, real quick, can you state your name and address?
Name, I do that every time. I'm Kathy Barelli from Brookhaven, and I am part of the drama that's in front of the courthouse, and I have no problem admitting it because I've been out there for 25 years, and I am part of the drama. The guy that's next to me's been there less than a year. And I don't know how far 20 feet is. I know there's two crosswalks, one's on one end, one's on the other end. I don't know if 20 feet apart will block a crosswalk. I have no idea. I don't know what that, what that looks like. But I do know the reason I am as close as I am behind Jeff, he has 200 pounds of propane that is flammable. If somebody walks between us and they're smoking and he has a leak, we're in trouble. It will explode. You will not smell it until it's too late. That has happened in Philadelphia, more so than not, with a leaky propane tank. I've been out at the courthouse 25 years, and I've never had one fire inspector come by my trailer and look at my tank. I know how to check it, but I don't know if the person next to me does. And that is my fear, is the reason why I park as close as I do, because somebody smoking is going to walk between us, and if he's got a leak, it's going to cause a problem. As at the last workshop, Augie Panatellis admitted, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday worked. Tuesday and Thursday worked. I worked Tuesday and Thursday. Augie worked Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We were not doubled up. I was at the corner of Orange and Front for eight years. Never had trouble with traffic, because when I pull up on the sidewalk, I'm coming in on an angle, and because my trailer is so, so much smaller, I am at the curb. My back door is right at the curb. The people are coming to me on the sidewalk with plenty of room to walk, to walk by, to not block anybody. So there is not a traffic hazard if you're, if I'm facing the courthouse on Orange. Now, if I'm on Orange this way and I'm looking at the courthouse here, there's still, there's nobodies in the street. The only person that would be close to the street would be me. If I step into the street from my back door, that would be a liability on me. But I am so small that there is no traffic hazard. I know Vice President mentioned it, that there's, but there really isn't. There never has been for eight years. And I literally was there, and it worked for two, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday. So the delay, there really doesn't have to be a delay because the person next to me, he worked it for three months, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and I was Tuesday, Thursday. There was never any double up. He would come on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I would show up on Tuesday and Thursday. Everybody was happy. Augie was happy, I was happy. Jeff was happy, I was happy. So now, here we are at the drama, and I am part of it because I will not let him disrespect me anymore. I've been called names, I can't get into my spot. He stays there deliberately because of, somebody parks where I can't come in and back up on an angle, I can't get in. I have yet to come there to the courthouse and block him. If I get there first by five minutes, Jeff can't get in. He can't work that day. And I could do that, but I don't want to cause him from not working. But I don't want him to stop me from not working and doing what's right. And what's right is, I've been out there 25 years. I deserve a portion of that courthouse in front if that's, if you're going to leave us both there. I deserve it without him being next to me. Tuesday and Thursday is all I want. And I've asked him, that's all I want, Jeff, Tuesday and Thursday. You got the three of the best days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. That's all I want, but I will go back to the corner, but you got to send Jeff to the corner because that's fair, and leave the courthouse for business. Yesterday, there was ambulances. Today, there was ambulances. They can't get in, not only because of us, but because of the police cars that are there, and I know nobody can do anything about that. But there really doesn't need to be a yearly delay. Jeff and I have been out there long enough to know what works. So make a decision and let me go on with my life because there is so much drama, and it's, but I won't give up. I will fight to the end. I'll take my last breath with my business that I raised two kids on, and they're 43 and 39 now. And 25 years says something. And something else that needs to be brought up is, is the health department also needs to do their job, and that would make your job better. We have to submit a plan to the health department when we get a trailer. You have to submit a plan, just like a business does. Jeff didn't do that. He went out and bought this 14-foot trailer, whereas the health department could have said, Jeff, I gotta go to the borough and find out if 14 feet will fit in front of the courthouse. I have to get permission. You can't just open up a business and hope that everything's fine. There was no plan to say, can it be bright yellow? Can it look like a circus is coming to town? No, it's a place of business. He plays music in the mornings. This is a place of business, and I don't, I don't want to be the drama, but I am the drama because it's the way it is. I'm 64, and I didn't get to be 64 by sitting on my hiney, but there really doesn't need to be a delay. You guys could make a decision, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday. If Jeff doesn't like it, he did it for three months, he did it for four months. It's workable, and there would be no more drama. And I would assure you of that. But the danger of the propane is my fear because I will, I have 20 pounds, he's got 200. So after what happened with the governor's mansion, you would think that maybe take one of his tanks away and give him, give it 100 pounds. But he bought the trailer, and it's a carnival trailer. It's not a business trailer for the front of the courthouse. My trailer was designed specifically for the sidewalk to do business and not create issues, so, thank you. I really want to say thank you, all of you, for working on this because this is, it didn't have to come to this. Even, I would have come to you six months ago if Jeff had just said, let's just do Tuesday and Thursday, let's get along. But he's, he's got meals now. You don't even have to go home for dinner. He's got shrimp and flounder and french fries, so, and I'm selling hot dogs.
Thank you, Ms. Barelli.
Thank you so much. Really, really.